Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's October the 15th. This is a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Johnson?
Right.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, I'm here.
Supervisor Angus?
Yep.
Supervisor Gould?
Here.
And Chairman Bishop.
Okay, thank you very much. The first and only item on the agenda is a discussion of possible action and update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, and taking any necessary actions based upon the updates. We have our Public Health Director at the podium, Ms. Denise Burley, and I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I will, as always, start out with my numbers. There have been a total of 4,019 cases in the county to date, 3,609 recovered, or approximately 90% of those cases, 217 deaths, and approximately 17% of those cases were hospitalized at some point in their illness, and that equates to 697 that's in the fact sheet. The average case, average age of cases is 47.7, average age of deaths is 75.8. I will talk a little bit about some of the recent discrepancies of sorts that you see, differences really in the numbers, so if there's any questions related to differences between case summary and fact sheet, we'll get to that a little bit later in this presentation. So, for right now, does anybody have any questions on those numbers or any of that information?
Any questions?
Okay, all right. In the hospital update today, looking at the report that was sent out this morning, it doesn't appear that there are any major changes or concerns at this point. Again, based on conversations with hospitals, we're not seeing any or hearing any issues or concerns around capacity or surges in cases and so forth, so we will keep you posted as we learn more about that throughout the coming weeks. Any other questions on the hospital report?
No questions.
All right. I don't know if you had an opportunity this morning to look at the business benchmarks. We are still in the moderate range, and our percent positivity and hospital visits for COVID-like illness both fit into the minimal category. However, the cases for 100,000 individuals is what remains in the moderate category, and that keeps us in the moderate range at this point. So we'll continue to monitor those numbers, as will ADHS, and we'll review those numbers each Thursday as they come out. Any questions on the business benchmarks?
Denise, do you have any outlook as to when we might reach the next benchmark, based on how we've been going?
You know, it seems like we are a little bit on this roller coaster, although the ups and downs have been a lot more moderate. We haven't seen any extreme ups and downs, of course, as you've seen, and we were really flirting with that minimal number for that one week of September 6th, but we've gone up slightly, and we need to drop down, I believe, we're probably looking at about 22 cases per, you know, in terms of reporting 22 cases in a week before we can get down to that, in two consecutive weeks. So we're not far from that number, and I think the activities and preventive measures that people are taking are continuing to help in that regard and keep our numbers down.
Okay, is there anything that we can do as a community that would benefit us in reaching that next benchmark, other than, you know, the obvious with the CDC guidelines?
The CDC guidelines are best guide for moving forward in that manner. I think, you know, and you've heard me talk about the use of masks and using masks as a way to prevent the spread, physical distancing and continuing those efforts. You know, if you're home, if you're sick, please stay home, monitor those if you think you're sick with COVID, get tested. I think there's a variety of those same steps that we've talked about for many months now that kind of play into our ability to keep those numbers down and move in the direction of the minimal range.
Okay. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, I personally take Q-certain, zinc, and vitamin D3 along with some other things, and there have been some studies that lack of vitamin D and zinc make your cells more apt to be infected by viruses. Do you know anything about that?
I don't personally have read some of that information in studies, and I understand there's more being done around that to learn more about vitamin D's effects, but that's something we could bring forward if you'd like just to, in terms of presenting more information about that.
That might be interesting if that's the Board's will.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. Supervisor Gould, in fact, if it helps, that would be wonderful. If it doesn't help, it certainly wouldn't hurt.
Certainly.
So a list of recommended supplements, vitamins, things like that, I think it'd be nice to present to the public. Supervisor Angus?
Denise, so what did you make of the new CDC report that said that something like 70% of the positive cases say that they wear masks all the time, and then you get the other report? I mean, there's a lot of different reports. How do you wade through all of that to say what the CDC guidelines, because frankly, they seem to change every day?
They do change, and I acknowledge that for sure. I mean, I think as we learn more, as research, more research is being conducted, and we learn more, and that, and not just research being conducted, but also then research being vetted, vetted by their peers, and knowing that those individuals are looking to sort of poke holes at the research to make sure that it's strong and supported. So in those cases, you know, we work strictly off of the CDC's website and looking at that as their guidance, because that's what they post, and that's the strongest evidence that we have at that particular moment in time to try to address the problem. And I haven't seen that specific report, so I'll have to look for that and see if, and if you have a copy of that, I appreciate the link.
Sure will.
Always do.
Any other questions? Supervisor Watson?
I don't have a question for Ms. Burley, but I do have a couple comments and possibly a motion. Based on the number of comments that we're receiving through different social media messaging and concerning the mask mandate, I think it'd be beneficial for the Board to hear from our constituents, and that way they can field questions, and possibly we can answer those questions with some satisfaction. We are making a great deal of progress as compared to other counterparts throughout the state, and I certainly hope we don't diminish those by any decision we make, but I think we ought to be able to hear to our constituents. So, I move that we cancel the special board meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 22nd, 2020, and schedule in its place, at the same time and location, a town hall or public workshop to give the public an opportunity to address the Board on the mask mandate. Now, I would like to add that Mojave County is only requiring masks in Mojave County buildings, and that is to protect our people that provide essential services to the public, and we're not requiring, as part of our mandate, for those people to wear masks throughout the unincorporated portions of Mojave County. So I'm hoping that we can make that point clear, and I'm hoping that we can have that workshop next Thursday in place of our regular special meeting. I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second or discussion?
Discussion, please, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus?
So, you know, this idea that we have the mask mandate in the county buildings to protect our employees, has anyone ever asked the employees whether they want to be protected?
No.
How they feel about the masks themselves? I mean, I think, personally, I think it's time to get rid of the mask mandate in the building. We're having a special meeting after the meeting on the 19th, and there's going to be a lot of people here, and I assure you that some of those people who are coming are not going to be wearing masks, and that's going to be a problem. Are we going to tell our representatives they have to wear a mask? It's going to be an issue, and for our citizens who want to come in. So, I agree that, but I think it's kind of almost past time for this town hall, because we all have the same information. So if, Supervisor Watson, is the purpose of the town hall, what's the purpose of it?
Well, I think to further provide information to those constituents that are somewhat confused about our position on the mask. And as you just stated, it's close to being correct, but it didn't include the six-foot distancing. If we accomplish the six-foot distancing, there's no requirement for the mask in our buildings with our employees. So, just a matter of getting that information out to our constituents and clarifying the position. I think there are a lot of people that are confused by what we want and what the cities have required and what they're not requiring now, and I think it'd just be good to have that information clear and precise.
So are people going to have to wear masks when they come in here to talk? Because we know there are groups who want to talk, but they will not wear masks, and there are people who can't wear masks because of health issues.
That is true. There are people that cannot wear masks due to health issues, but we also provide face shields, probably, if we can make sure that there's at least a six-foot separation between those individuals and others. Maybe that's another avenue that we can look at.
Supervisor Gould?
I don't believe that our mask mandate allows the non-wearing of masks when there's six-foot social distancing. I believe it requires the wearing of a mask or a face shield anytime you're in the county facility, but I could be wrong.
Madam Chair, Eltrus?
Madam Chair, good afternoon, Board members. As it stands now, the Board decision that was taken the last time the Board voted was to require face covering along with social distancing in county buildings. With that said, that's what we have been doing, and just if you recall, the Board truly in the motion and in the vote went as far as specifically saying we will provide face shield and face mask and services online and services by phone, just to provide reasonable accommodations. So, until the Board votes otherwise, that's really what we have been doing, what the staff is doing. If indeed the Board decides to hold this public hearing or workshop on Thursday, the 22nd, we would ask people to comply and conform with what the vote, what the Board decided the last time the Board voted on it. We will, or we can, those that want to come speak and wear either face mask or face shield can. Those that wish not to, we will be more than happy, I would think, to receive written statements. We can, if indeed that's what the Board decides on, we can between now and next Thursday, get the word out that that is what we will, we want to hear from the public, and ultimately that feedback hopefully will be of value to the Board members to make a decision, either change it completely or change it partially, whatever the Board, given constituents' feedback, whatever the Board decides on. So, I just wanted to really clarify that, given your comments, Supervisor Gould, and the motion that is on the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Supervisor Angus?
The 22nd is the CSA Summit, too. I might actually be in Phoenix.
Okay.
Supervisor Gould?
Another issue is we can't have much of a town hall with only 49 available seats in the auditorium, so that might be something to think about.
That's true, but once people speak, then if they vacated, others could come in at So the CSA Summit is on the 22nd. It's scheduled for in the morning, and this meeting is at noon, so my intent was to, regardless of where the summit was, I would be able to attend the special meeting. And as far as attending in person, I don't know how many people will be attending. As far as I know, the Executive Board will attend on Friday, of which I will be there as one of the officers.
I've already, I've already run it past them, so you can.
Well, yeah, you can. It's just most of our membership is attending by Zoom. Okay, so Supervisor Gould, will you be available on the 22nd here in town, or will you be going to CSA?
I won't be going to CSA. I would, I'll be available.
Okay, and I think Supervisor Johnson, he typically doesn't go to CSA, so that would be a quorum. Madam Chair, I would say. Okay, thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Any other further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I believe that was four yes and one no. Madam Chair? Supervisor Angus?
I'm just going to go for it. I make a motion that we rescind the mask mandate at the county buildings.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. My vote would be a no at this time.
When you go to Phoenix, will you be entertaining the Governor?
Okay, little side conversation there, but Supervisor Angus, if you have the opportunity, you might ask the Governor if he wants to rescind his emergency declaration.
I plan on it.
All right. Please report back to us what he says.
And I apologize to the Chair for the side comments I was making to our Board member.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? Okay, Ms. Burley, do you have anything more?
I do, yes. And actually, I have Mayor Schumacher on the phone, because I gave you all a presentation on some data, based on some questions that were posed at the last meeting. I thought we'd elaborate a little bit through some data. But before doing that, I also wanted to talk about those case counts, and I'll put something up here to show you all. And what this is on the podium is just a synopsis, a summary of a week worth of data that has come in, and I know Supervisor Johnson has brought this up as a question, and Supervisor Johnson, please let me know if this answers your question. But looking at the case summaries that come in, as we've talked about before, right, are a point in time. That's not addressing the ins and the outs that are related to changes in jurisdiction and other factors that play into why a case may be removed from Mojave County. So, and Mayor can certainly speak to some of these, any questions that you may have, as well as myself. But I wanted to give you sort of a snapshot of the fact that you can see the CS in this particular visual is the case summary, and the report cases are those that we extract out of MedSIS. And same for deaths, case summary for deaths and case summary, the report for deaths. And as you can see, over the course of a week, we have a difference of one, but if you look on a day-to-day basis, you'll see up to a difference of five throughout that, on that particular day. So for example, on October 5th, you'll see that there's a difference of five cases between the case summary and the report cases. And I think what this really highlights is, you know, and knowing that we use the case summaries for the development of our press releases each evening, right? And the reported cases and information of that nature from MedSIS goes into the fact sheets. But the use of those two systems really continues to highlight the fact that the system itself for reporting infectious diseases and reporting COVID cases and used to collective report this type of data is not designed to be reported necessarily on a daily basis because of all those ins and outs. So, the two systems that we have in play right now cause a bit of conflict, if you will. And it's not that I'm recommending any changes at this point, I'm just pointing out that when we get people who are mathing through our cases still and saying our numbers don't match, they do match, as you can see, or come very close over time, but it takes time for that to occur, and that time is not necessarily a 24-hour clock. And so as we go through, we just want to make sure that it's clear that our data that we report in that fact sheet is all the most recent data we have available to us in that minute that we pull that report at 5:00 on that day. Whereas the case summary is really just a snapshot of what we've gotten over the course of a day, but that could change over that timeframe, right, over the course of a week. Any questions there?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If this was going to be the MedSIS, you feeling a justification of out of jurisdiction, etc., have lesser reporting errors and more acrimonial or public health care workers?
It's a very good question, and Mayor has a great deal more experience with MedSIS than I, so Mayor, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. So that can be a supervisor, Madam Chair. There's a lot of examples, supervisor, that was the question, somebody can be raised that, or somebody tell me again?
Supervisor Johnson, could you repeat your question, please? About the, you were speaking to updating MedSIS, is that correct?
Yes, that was my question. It's an old system, which I can basically say probably outdated, and while it might not help us with this pandemic, but in future pandemics, it would be helpful for organizations to get out more accurate information, and also, you know, if the public, you know, more correct information, the Governor is putting on $400 million dollars, I have a whole thing that maybe we could have an order to direct the Chairman to ask the Governor to maybe update that with the golden money.
So that's a great question. I always have a chance of updating the data-based system. There always can be methods where we can use, you know, lots of different methods. I think though here, it's not just the system itself, it's the way that we're going to report it, because we probably get to those new pages really fast to do balance for that. We sometimes make it to information, it may be just an hour, and that's just because we don't have the information yet, because we don't know the facts coming in on the jurisdiction. So, that type of part of contributing would be mandatory, if they were giving. Now, there's some other things that, yeah, that would be great, and that would be great to have better technology systems.
Did that answer your question, Supervisor Johnson?
Not really, but if we were to see if you think it would be worthwhile, and it couldn't be over the pay there of the Governor, if we just made that executive to the Governor of updating this budget, that's not.
Right, right. And I think the answer to that specific question is yes. I mean, I think we're always looking for better systems. This system has been in place for many, many years, and while it's been upgraded, is it the best system available? I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't know how much research has been done at the state level to determine whether or not it is the best system for our use in reporting infectious diseases. So I think at the very least, it would be helpful to know if the state has taken any steps in that manner, and that they've looked and researched whether or not this is the best tool for us in the moment, well, not necessarily in the moment, because obviously we're not going to change anything during the middle of a pandemic, but looking forward, as you mentioned, is this the best system for reporting infectious diseases moving forward? And at the very least, I'd look for that research, and if they determine that it is not the best system and there are available funds to look at purchasing a different system, then that would certainly be a good use of those funds.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I would like to establish a motion to direct the Dow to put together a letter for the Chairman, sending it to the Governor, to be able to get you a piece of the essentials with a couple of thirty, forty million dollars, if the Governor has to adhere to the regulations.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Staff, understand the motion?
I didn't get the last part, but did the clerk get it? It was, it was to draft a letter for the Chairman's signature to be sent to the Governor, but I didn't know the exact purpose.
Supervisor Johnson, can you clarify, because the sound is not real great today?
Sure. It's just to suggest to the Governor that we look at updating the system we have now for future pandemics, probably after money.
Okay, understand, that was very clear. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. So we do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, all right. The other question that was posed on Monday, or Tuesday, sorry, got my short week all messed up here, was about youth cases, and I did want to also present a slide here that I'll set up here and talk about, and these are the youth cases that we've seen, and you'll, if you look at the, at the charts here, starting May 15th and moving all the way through September 27th, these are in two-week intervals. intervals, two reporting intervals. Total youth cases as of, I believe this was yesterday, and Mayor, please correct me if I'm, if I don't have my date right, of 287 youth cases. And then Mayor, do you want to sort of take over some of the discussion about what this chart reflects and what we see within the numbers?
Sure. We just wanted to start tracking this really a bit, like, we want to start tracking what we see in school, maybe children, and see if there's going to be an increase when schools open. And of course, that doesn't mean that all school ladies and children are attending schools, but we like to look into that and we will be asking any cases, the case, of course, whether the child is going to an emergency school. So this chart mostly follows the overall curve. You all recognize that we have a lot of cases in the middle of July, and then it's decreased, and it's decreased in the last couple of weeks. Now, I did not put on the most recent weeks ending on October 3rd to October 10th, because those probably aren't complete yet. However, there were only 10 cases in that activity period as well so far. So we're asking time to bury us, which is fairly low, but if you did it.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Any questions?
Supervisor Angus. So in this, since May, in this chart, there have been no deaths aged between 5 and 18. Have there been any deaths?
That's correct.
Correct.
There's not been any yet.
Any other questions about youth and children? No questions. Okay, all right. So we'll move on to what you have in your hand out there, the comparison to other jurisdictions. And this was a report put together based on the Tuesday meeting, again, by our data team, fondly known as the STAT PAC. But they have put together this report to try to help compare Mojave County to national and statewide and even other counties within Arizona and give you a sense of where we sit in terms of cases. So as you start going through here on the second page, second slide, cases per capita US map, you can see that, you know, those numbers are within the 100 to 200 range for our county. And I realize this is a small map when you consider it's all kind of splotched in colors here, but any questions on this particular slide? If not, we'll move on to the next page. Cases per capita close-up of Arizona as of 10/14/2020. And you, again, will look and see that those colors are very much in that, in the same range, in the orange, the 100 to 100 case range for Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City. Any particular questions on that slide? Okay, so Kingman is not represented in this. Mayor, can you jump in for that one?
This is a map that's produced by the need our time using CDC's COVID data. So we're going to run into those same problems that we had before, non-area, this, those, et cetera, et cetera. Kingman probably is on there, but the only two cities that they highlight are Rayhawes City and Polk State, so that's why I showed those.
Okay, thank you.
If we forward to the next page, cases per capita in the counties. And you can see that there are certainly an increase or a high number of cases in the eastern, northeastern part of the state and the southwestern part of the state. And we sort of sit in a, I think we sit in a very nice place. This chart doesn't really put it in perspective, and future graphs here as we go through this will, of the status of our particular county when compared to others, so. If we move on to the next slide.
Madam Chairman.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Supervisor Gold.
Denise, these are based on total case numbers since the onset of the pandemic?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And then, say, if we'll look at some better reporting.
Okay, next chart, rate of COVID cases per 100,000. This is as of the 13th of October, and this includes confirmed and probable. Just want to make that very clear there. And you can still see Mojave County numbers at 1,887.7, USA at 2,400 basically, and Arizona at 3,153 cases per 100,000. So again, we're doing relatively well, I think, in terms of our numbers. We have a lower rate of COVID cases than in Arizona and the US. Any questions there? Okay. Now we get down to a more granular level of data here, rate of cases, COVID cases per 100,000 population, again, confirmed and probable cases. We still have a lower case count than most Arizona counties, and only Cochise, Avapai, and Greenlee have lower case counts there, so. Any questions on that particular chart? All right, move on to the next. Rate of COVID cases per 100,000 as of just yesterday and confirmed only, you still see us in the same pattern, really, for confirmed cases as confirmed and probable. So still sitting towards the bottom of that chart, so that's good news for us, definitely good news. Okay. Following page, in the past six weeks, September and October only. For most, rate for most recent cases, Mojave County remains lower than most Arizona counties again in the last six weeks. So again, good news.
Okay. All right, it says we should stay close to home, huh? Not sure I want to go down to Phoenix for CSA.
Or visit beautiful Greenlee County.
Yeah, it's, it definitely helps you pick your communities, your vacation spots, maybe. Total COVID hospitalizations per 100,000, we sit sort of in the middle here on an average, lower than some, higher than others, so. And we're about the same as Arizona and higher than the US as a whole, so. Any questions there? And then again, last page, almost last page. Mojave County has a slightly higher death rate compared to other counties in Arizona and the US. And again, we have a slightly older population or higher percentage of an older population, which could contribute to that. Okay. And then some conclusions on the final page. Mojave County has COVID-19 rates that are relatively low compared to other counties in Arizona and the US. Lack of testing, especially at the start of the pandemic, may have deflated actual number of identified cases and encouraged symptomatic contacts to stay home, but not necessarily get tested, as we've talked about in the past. The death rate appears high, however, again, we have a high percentage, higher percentage of individuals, older adults, who may be more vulnerable to the COVID-19 illness. And as always, prevention of COVID-19 is the most effective and economical way to combat the disease, so. Any questions on this report?
Supervisor Gold.
Denise, don't we have one of the highest rates of cigarette smoking in the state?
Yes, yes, we do.
Might have something to do with that.
Correct.
Thanks.
There are also health behaviors that play into this for certain. Any questions here?
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. Seems like some of the dark, really good news for Mojave County, Arizona has seen our total over 800 in the past three days. In fact, today we're over 1,100 cases, that's the number we have seen over a month. Our key is all over one, and has been for about a week. You think the steps that we can take in Mojave County or for a big case, I'd be afraid that our people fall into COVID, the masks, it could be attributed to these.
Well, I do believe that, you know, we need the public's help, obviously, in keeping these numbers down, so if they're engaging in all of these preventive steps, I think it does keep our numbers down, and I think in other counties, there's maybe specific reasons where you might see some increases, so I'll speak for Coconino, Maricopa, and Pima, where some of their increase in case counts is coming from the colleges and the universities opening up to in-person education. And so you're seeing increases in cases coming from the college campuses themselves. I'm sure there are other reasons and other factors that play into that as well, but in this particular case, those particular three counties, you know, you can see their increase in cases, at least partially attributed to the college campuses opening and the timing of that, so. You know, I think we, the masks, the social distancing, physical distancing, and the other measures that people are taking are keeping our numbers down, even if not everybody does it. I think the sheer number of people that have committed to doing this and taking these steps is helping with that process and keeping our numbers down.
But then, under the guidelines that the governor, we have to work under in order to get our county back open, we just want to be sure to continue what we were doing.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Angus. But, so if I understand Supervisor Johnson correctly, that what we've been doing in the last several weeks has contributed to our low numbers, but the mask mandate has been lifted from Bullhead and from Lake Havasu City, and we never had one. So it kind of flies. There are people who do it, and, you know, I get that, but it's not, it's not because of those things. I mean, there's no evidence.
Well, I mean, I can't attribute, you know, I don't have anything specific to point at. That's correct. I mean, as far as evidence goes, I've not done any research around that to really be able to say that with a scientific mind, right, and point of view. But I will say that while they have lifted their mask mandates in those communities, there are still a number of people, based on conversations, at least I can speak with with the Lake Havasu City mayor, who have said, there's still a lot of people who wear the masks or businesses that require them to go into their business itself. So those are still in place, and I think people are engaging in those activities, again, for their own benefit and for the benefit of others, and considering the fact that the masks really protect, I mean, I wear a mask to protect you. If I have the illness, that's what's going to protect you from me. Physical distancing is a large part of that as well, but the mask can help, so. But a combination of those two really helps, it really helps build that case for seeing those numbers lower.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yep, folks, I think a lot of it has to do with population density also. If you look at the density of population, even inside the cities in Mojave County, I don't believe the population density is as high as it is in a block down in Phoenix. You could probably gauge that by, census data would show it, but the number of political precincts in a given area would show you that, and I believe that's why you're seeing it so bad in New York City and Chicago and the eastern seaboard is because that's a highly populated area. You're seeing it along the west coast also, up and down the west coast, because that has a higher population density than in the west. If we look at that map, the map is basically white from the center of the country to, you know, to California.
Right.
And it's because of population density.
Right, and that's a very good point Supervisor Gold. I mean, we don't have that density in our population here in our county.
You're seeing that also, a large number hitting Hispanics and Native Americans because of socioeconomics, they're more apt to have a higher number of people inside their own households than a lot of us do. So I think that's the fact that you're seeing in Yuma and Pima County, and then up in the tribal Navajo and Hopi areas.
Yeah, and they have a lot of intergenerational, multi-generational households, which also, you know, lends itself to the spread of an illness when you have older adults.
Yeah, and you're getting it from the other people in your household. You're not really getting it from walking through Walmart. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? Discussion? Okay, so do you have anything else Denise?
Do not, no.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.